Now, what would you call it?
Mr. Mayor?
Here.
Mr. Brewer?
Here.
Mr. Brand?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Todd?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Here.
All right, I have instructions to review of the RFP for fire hydrant project. I'm sure all the trustees before you started, they have a copy of the plan that I put out. You don't have it here, so you can start. I called the meeting so we could go over something, review this. This is for not just a few of the hydrants, this is for, this is for all the hydrants. And as you can see on your second page here, there's a context. And these are the things we'll be talking about, I'll be going over. And then, then the questions or the comments you can address those. So the first item is, what are we doing? And when I took office as mayor in, as mayor in 2017, I presented the board of trustees with my vision. And the village's very first strategic plan of progress. The village board of trustees adopted this plan, which was our starting point for our 2019 comprehensive plan. As part of our strategic plan for progress, we identified a few specific goals to review, to rebuild Saw Village's aging infrastructure. More particularly aggressively repair and replace fire hydrants with a specific timeline for completion. This project addresses the lives and needs the object for this strategic plan of progress. I am submitting my proposal, which adheres to front level objectives as I write in our strategic plan for progress to the village board for consideration. This plan calls for repair and placement of all of the village's defective and broken fire hydrants throughout the entire village and not just a few. I believe we need to get the entire job done and not do this in a pieced-up fashion. I do not believe doing a small handful is responsible nor fair to the residents of Saw Village. This project plan, as I am submitting, eliminates all those questions and evidences. This is my recommendation to the village board after discussions with our village staff, our engineers, and other professionals. Okay, including this plan is the entire matrix of how we will proceed, move forward, and finance the cost of the project. This project, as the village board wants it, wants to do this, will kick off in the third week of November and complete the second week of May, whoever committed. Number one, what are we doing? We plan to ongoing a proper assessment, repair, replace, and restore surrounding areas for approximately sixty-five hydrants identified by our village staff. This will be done through a proper request, our request or proposal, RFP from half-ten capable and ready licensed environmental contractor. Our history. Over the course of the last twenty years, there's been an inadequate maintenance and operation of the village's aging infrastructure, including fire hydrants. For many years, this has been kicked down, I'm sorry, this can has been kicked down the road that we included this as an objective within our strategic plan for progress. There have been many attempts to get the sixty or so fire hydrants repaired or replaced throughout the years, which has now caused the village to consider a very large capital outlay in order to rectify the fire hydrant for serious problems. Saw Village's water department lacks the capacity to get this repaired done efficiently and within a reasonable timeline, which is why this problem continues to exist decades later. The process. Village staff will revise the location of all the fire hydrants which have been, which will be provided to the successful bidder in the contact phase. RFP phase. The village board posts a request for proposal asking potential contractors to submit their credentials and costs associated with assessment and repair. Excuse me. Assessment phase. The successful bidder will perform an assessment of all fire hydrants and adjacent valves identified by village staff for repair and replacement and shall provide a written report back to the village. Contractors shall provide a specific timeline for work to be completed. The evaluation phase. The village, along with the engineers, will review the recommendations made in the assessment phase and will finalize the timeline for repairs. The repair phase. The contractor performs repairs of all upper portions of the fire hydrants. He places fire hydrants and adjacent auxiliary valves and replaces up to five feet of water main and hydrant tees if required. Contractor will also repair, replace up to seventy-five feet of concrete or pavement area at each fire hydrant if needed. In the restoration phase, village staff will perform all final break, feedback, excavation, and restoration and work around each fire hydrant within thirty days of repair or replacement. Project cost estimation. The project estimate, the project cost estimate estimations for all components of this project are estimated. I'll say again, the project cost estimation are all components of this project are estimated. They are not actual costs on what can, on what we can expect from this project. And here is the table of some of the things that, well, this is the table of things that need to be done. The assessment phase, the range is from twelve thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to thirteen thousand eight hundred. The village engineering evaluation from four thousand to five thousand dollars. Repairs to about ten fire hydrants, thirteen thousand, fourteen valves, and replacement of fifty fire hydrants, four hundred and six thousand to four hundred and twenty dollars. Hydrant tees estimated twenty-five of them, seventy-five to seventy-seven thousand dollars. Contractor restoration costs, ninety-four to ninety-seven thousand. Restoration expenses by the village, thirty to forty thousand. And the project continues in which it's a ten percent, sixty-three to sixty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. The total project estimated is between six hundred and nineteen thousand and seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. The next page, you see a timeline. And it's pretty self-explanatory, start, third, third, fourth week that's in the orange. Go all the way down, it shows exactly where it'll be at, at any different, different time. Opening of RFP will be done first in December. Opening bid will be done the third week in December. The review of the bid by the engineers, that should be right after that, fourth and, and the first will be January. The award to the bid, the successful bidder will be the second week in January. The execution of the contractor being the second week in January. Kickoff meeting with the contractors will be in the third week in January. The assessment phase will be in the fourth week to the first week of February. Evaluation phase will be the second, third, and fourth week of February. The repair phase will start the first week of March, all the way to the second week of April. The contractor's restoration phase will be the third week of April and then the fourth week of April. And the village's landscape restoration part will take place around the second, I'm sorry, the first to the second week in May. Now, pardon, you probably wondered, I find out which makes sense. How are we going to pay for the costs? The cost estimates are just estimate, estimation of costs. However, I am fairly confident that we can get this project done within the plan. How are we going to pay for this? The village's CN swamp health only cover a portion of the cost. But as you know, the village's waterfront is healthy. This is because of our efforts and collections and being responsible for that dividend to the waterfront to pay bills, which has been the contractors for administration's price. One only needs to look at our audit reports to find that the village has been disorderly negligent prior to my administration. I asked our village board of trustees to consider this. How we were able to pay our, I, I'm sorry, I asked our village board of trustees to consider this. How were we able to pay our bills? Eliminate an occurring, I'm sorry, reoccurring injury report and with routinely in one million dollars and amassed a nice tight sum in our waterfront. Hopefully, you will conclude that it's been my administration's staff diligent financial discipline, which allowed us to curb the repeated abuse of the waterfront revenue within chaotic spending. Hopefully, your forensic audit, which you wanted to call us, allowed me to appoint that out to you. With that said, I recommend preutilize our refund, our rep revenues within the waterfront to cover contractual expenses of this project. And to utilize the CN revenue with permission from the CN railroad. Here's a breakdown of both boards to consider. Fifty thousand dollars in motor vehicle tax, accessible and acceptable to fund restoration expenses under this project. Hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in CN fund, if it's permitted by the CN railroad, and five hundred and six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars from the waterfront, which is approximately one point two million dollars in that fund. Additionally, I will begin working on the capital projects for our fiscal year 2021, '22 budget and alternate funding revenues for each project and studies to help fund debt service for that plan. I will be ruling out these proposals as we enter the budget process next year. At this point, are there any questions?
I, I'm, Mr. Mayor. First, and I want to say this twice, I'm all in favor of getting every fire hydrant fixed in this year in this village. We have been talking about this for years and years. Again, I am, can you hear?
I'm here.
Not stopping.
Can you hear the person talking?
I can hear you. You can't hear me.
Can I talk over? What a bunch of dingbats. Jesus. I am all in favor.
Can you hear? Can you hear that? Okay.
I'm all in favor in repairing, but all the fire hydrants, they have been out of service for the last decade here in the village. Now, I'm going to say that again, I'm all in favor for repairing all the fire hydrants in the village that have been out of service for the last decade. Now, according to your strategic plan, in the last three and a half years, there's nothing been done with the fire hydrant. It's costing money and we just didn't have the manpower. But now we're still struggling through the same problem. Now, we have a plan, it's been approved by the union, and also it's been approved by Robinson Engineering. They have identified the different fire hydrants that we're working on. And we're going to have RFPs that come in around the twenty-fourth of November. We have already paid Robinson Engineering about eleven thousand, thousand dollars for the, for engineering studies in order to get these fire hydrants fixed that we have been paying for. However, with your, with your plan that you just proposed, I have a couple of questions after that. But I would think this would only could go on with what we already done. We don't want to just ignore what we have already done because, if I'm not mistaken, we, they started that Saturday. So some work is being done already. This plan is in place. We have personnel, public works people, it's been approved by the union, and also we just ready to go. So to just nip this plan and to go into another plan, I think would be just a waste of time and money. But I'm all for revising the plan. So we're going to finish the fifty hydrants that we, that we proposed, because there are sixty-seven, if I'm not mistaken, that need to be fixed, repaired, either replaced. To go to the Bureau of State of Pay, where, let me start. Fifth page. Yes, it's the fifth page, where you have the breakdown of the different components. The first one you talked about is the assessment phase. But I'd like to know what engineer, what engineering firm has, where did you get that information from? Because I'm piggybacking on what Trustee Brand has said before, what, you know, can we have the engineer come in and describe what he's going to do for, what is it, twelve thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to thirteen hundred eight hundred, thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. So I'd like to know what engineers come to do that. Also, what engineer is going to evaluate? Robinson Engineering just did an evaluation of the seventeen hydrants that we are working on. So I'd like to know, since it's only four or five thousand dollars, I'd like to see something writing from, whatever engineering firm, where you got this information from. The repairs for the ten fire hydrants, this thirteen thousand, fourteen fifty, I'd like to know the locations. And also the fifty thousand, the fifty fire hydrants, I'd like to know the locations of that. The hydrant tees I'm not familiar with, so I'd like the engineer to come and tell us what that's all about. And the, and the next thing is restoration. Up before is, you've got ninety-four thousand dollars for restoration, and then you have a second line for thirty thousand dollars. What's the difference between two restorations? And then we also put in a ten thousand dollar contingency fee. I'd like to know if we can get these figures from, and what engineering firm has come down and confirmed some of this stuff. Now, also, I'd like to remind you that according to the treasurer, that the superintendent said that we're going to have to borrow about four hundred thousand dollars from around March, April, because it's that name period, you know, it comes around here. So I'm all for getting the fire hydrants fixed, I might, I also want to put this out to you. Why don't we just go along and get everything fixed? I mean, we have the money to water, so why not use it? Now, also, I want to bring it to your attention that since we paid this money for Robinson Engineering already, we're just going to let it go, you know, just, just a waste of money? You know, I say, going to finish the project, we got a plan, it's been approved, and then we can start on your plan. We can have, we can start right now on the plan of what, what we can start fixing. I can fix the seventeen plus whatever stuff. So, I mean, that's, that's my suggestion.
Any more? Trust, trust me, Mayor?
My Trustee Brewer.
Can you? Where?
My Trustee Brewer said, huh? This is, this is all, all upside down to me. If it falls right in line with the election, the whole should act.
Oh, I just said. Can, can you hear? There was nothing, I just went into asking for any more questions, but Trustee Mayor was speaking now. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at the timelines, I'm listening. Since, since we've been sitting on this board, the only person who talked about fire hydrants was Trustee Brewer. Now all of a sudden, we have this grand plan. And to me, it falls right in line with the election. I'm not, I'm not trying to start a breach here, but you got.
You need to.
She says she can't hear Trustee.
What I was saying is that this falls right in line with the election. I mean, it just, it's not making sense to me. I thought we already had a plan and such. We've got aging buildings that are falling in line, we've got an esde garage, the public works garage, it needs to be replaced, the fire station, it needs to be torn out and rebuilt. And float a bond and fix everything at one time, if that's what we have to do. That's just my opinion, I mean, this, this, this plan, we, we have already got a plan, we've already started. And we've already got agreements with the union, so now, we're not, we're not happy to feel about the union around here anymore. But we've got the union, there wouldn't be nothing going on. Union's bending over backwards to help us. And all we're going to do is make these guys not trust us again. That's all I have to say.
I have something to say too.
Can you, can you hear, Trustee, does that speak? I'll speak right here.
Just a comment, since this was part of your strategic plan back in 2017, how many fire hydrants have you fixed to date? Any? And all of a sudden, right now, you're putting a plan in front of us that we just got right before the meeting, and we already instructed the village administrator to start working on RFPs. What about all the money that's been paid to the engineers to date and all the time that Jerry spent on this? That's all I have to say.
Did, Trustee, did you hear what she said?
I think you're right.
Okay, yeah, Trustee, Brand, get ready to check that out.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustee would hear? Trustee would, okay. Mayor, thank you for your plan, about putting this together. Like we learned, I meant based on what anybody else has said so far. So, to me, talk about floating a bond to do, to get all the fire hydrants done. So, according to the list, there are about sixty-seven fire hydrants that need to be repaired or replaced. So this plan covers all sixty-seven. So there's no need to float the bond personally. So I think the total estimated cost is seven hundred thousand dollars to get that done. So there's no need to float the bond. However, all the work, all the engineering work has already been done, that's great. And however many fire hydrants are fixed between now and when the plan started, that's great as well, but that's just less money we have to spend if we decide to move forward with this plan. And to date, I think we asked about number five, it's fixed, I think that's a better question than Mr. Weller back there. But I think it's somewhere between five and ten, I think as he said before, early part of this year. I'm in favor of fixing them all. I mean, to, to pieced up, like, you know, what we're going to do, and that's great, we're fixing some, we're making some progress, but to get them all done, I think that's even better. So, I think it's a great plan to move forward with. All the work that we've done so far is not done with the void, it's just going to, that's what our cost going forward. I think the unions, you know, I think they might not agree to a certain extent, but I think, again, that's a given take. And I think, there's much I can go back with in the problem of these negotiations on our behalf of fixing fire hydrants in that, because we know of the situation for years. So, I don't see a problem with planning. In regards to how we're going to pay for it, you know, we do have some agency for somebody in the back team, and then someone from the waterfront. And so I'm not supposed to forget that we do have the line of credit, but it's still in the touch today, that's also available. And we, so we do have multiple options to pay for this. And I can't just knock it out one shot. And if it takes until now and made it done, I mean, it takes, you know, it takes some time, but at least we're doing something.
Trustee, where is fifty thousand, Trustee Todd?
Okay, there. Trustee, what, can you hear me? Okay. One of the things, as I'm looking at this, I thought this board was in agreement with the plan that we were going to do. We were going to outsource the north side, and Public Works was going to do the south side. I know there's an RFP out there, why would we pay again for another RFP that we wanted to do in December? This should be done within the next couple of weeks, I'm assuming. I'm also looking at the price that you have here, a hundred and forty-two thousand in CN fund. I thought that was agreed, that it was going to be done for trees. That would be used for the public safety of the trees. There was a hundred thousand dollars I know that was put in for fire hydrants. There's fifty thousand in motor fuel tax, that was a real iffy thing, that had to be investigated because you don't know what you can use it for. As I read through this, am I in agreement that we need to get these done? Yes. But I thought the agreement was north side, outside contractors, person, union letting us do that, and south side that Public Works could do. I see that you have, and as you put, this is my recommendation to the village board after discussion with the village staff, our engineers, and other professionals. With this plan that you put together, Mr. Mayor, what village staff, engineers, and other professionals did you come up with this, with the cost? When we've been discussing this in the last couple of committee meetings? So that's all I have to say.
Do you think one of us said anything, did you have anything to say, Trustee Brewer?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My question to guys, in 2020, 2021, fire hydrants, we consider replacing and installing. Who prepares this place? Has the plan been reviewed by the village engineers, village administrators, public works, water companies, and the UCF? Did this plan have been under consideration since 2019? Lighting is just now coming to its table. And on October twenty, the mayor's request, village administrator, get a consensus, let's move forward with the plan presented that was reviewed by the city's business department. A consensus would reach to move forward, that plan is in motion. Robinson Engineering can prepare to request for proposal. We paid Robinson Engineering eleven thousand dollars to prepare RFPs that will be open next week. The project is in motion, and I am in favor of continuing with the plan. A plan calls for twenty fire hydrants to be completed by outside contractors and twenty to be completed by public works within a reasonable timeline to live. The wet waterfront is empty, and we need to use the waterfront to weather it in its own way. This plan presented today will delay further the project and cause additional fees to the village, to the village owners to prepare new RFPs and will undoubtedly. to prepare a new RFP, and will undoubtedly RFPs that will be submitted will be. Contractors are busy preparing their bids in charge soon after, and the union has already agreed to the plan of motion. That stating in the proposal, the height of the project has been under study for twenty years. I think it is unrealistic to think that we can wait until we do the entire village at one time. We are in the middle of a pandemic, our financial future is uncertain. We have many other issues that need to be addressed as well. This project delays the height of replacement to prepare till next spring. The residents cannot wait till next spring. Again, I am in favor of moving forward. The plan is already in motion.
Okay. Okay, in regards, I hope you can hear me. Uh, in regards to the, okay, in regards to the questions that were, uh, put out, I'm trying to answer most of them, um, that I've been hard to answer. Can you hear me with the rain? Trustee Bruce, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I can hear the rain is creeping in.
Well, then it looks the road.
It looks bad over here too.
Well, yeah, that would be. Uh, okay, in regards to the, uh, the plan itself, this plan that I'm talking about now was part of the comprehensive plan, which we started in twenty, where we, uh, pointed out in twenty nineteen. It's not that I started the fire hydrant replacement plan in twenty nineteen. This plan was part of the comprehensive plan that was, um, I think was on phase for like six months, we had meetings here. Uh, I think you came to some of, all the other trustees, everybody was invited to it, and this was part of the thing that we, in that, in that particular comprehensive plan. So if that's something that, you know, the reason why it down, that it's coming up, is because now we seem to be a little more stable. Even though we had the pandemic, um, we, we're a little bit more stable now with our, um, bills, and, uh, what we have in our conference. And I thought that now would be a time, not to just do one or two, but try to do them all at one time, because if we don't, then we'll do ten or fifteen if that, if that's winning. And we'll kick their hand down the street again, and then there'll be another four, five, six years, we'll get the rest of them done. So I'm looking at trying to get as many, if not all, done without taking out a vibe. Because there's something else that we're gonna bring about, that we talked to, we talked about, um, with myself and the, and the staff, the administrative staff, about folding the vibe to something different. This is something, excuse me, that I think that we should, um, incorporate now. As I said, as you said, as every trustee said, I'll bring it before the board. If the board wants to vote it down, fine. Only thing I can do is bring this forward. There's nothing, I don't know why people always feel that if I bring something, it's political. It's not political, it's something that needs to happen. I, it took me a minute to get all these and to get all of this information. And I've used this resources, we got SSMMA, I got other mayors that have done something similar to this, and other resources. That's why it took a minute to compile this information. So that's why I, I don't like to be a person to start, I said, we're working on so-and-so, and I don't have everything together. So it's not, it's not something I was hiding, or something that I was compiling, that we was able to do that. That's why I was able to get the costs. Now, as far as trustee was talking about the, uh, village engineer, I mean, okay, they did some evaluations for some things. We could tell them that, we could roll their costs into these particular ones. And as far as the, um, I don't know what the trustee was talking about, um, they're gonna do something twice, but no, they're going to, the, the, uh, company that's gonna do this will do it all, um, during that particular time when they start doing it. But most of it, as you can see, the preparation is, the, uh, the phase preparation is the, uh, evaluation, the assessment. The repair phase is one thing. But you have to have the bids, you have to have people come out and look at what is it they're gonna do at the posting. It's only gonna delay about a week, if that long, to delay that. The repair's not gonna happen this year anyway. I mean, we may be able to get, if we do right now, what we do, maybe be able to get a few more between now and the frost. Okay, we can continue to keep doing that until we get the RFP. Now, as far as going back to the union, I'm like, I don't know why people seem to think that I have something against the union. I'm a very serious person, but I don't have, I'm not, I'm not specifically trying to justify anything as far as the union's concerned, but that's a falsehood. So I'm hoping that the union will understand, we have to go and talk it up again. To understand, we have to get this done, we just don't have the manpower to do it in the village. Simple as that, that's not, that's not a hard thing to do. So, and, um, who did I talk to? I talked to village staff, I talked to, I, uh, I probably worked about certain things, yes, I did. Asked certain questions about certain things, and I compiled information. I waited until I had everything together, as I stated before, to bring it to the board, instead of bringing it piece by piece. Um, slinging at village staff, I told, um, okay, so it's, then I'm just, I'm putting it in the hands of the board. I'll ask, uh, probably the last, the, uh, fourth meeting of this month, uh, board may to have a vote, to have a vote on to move forward with this. If the board says no, then we don't, we continue what we're doing. They're saying yes, then we'll do that. Like I said, they'll just push this timeline back two more weeks, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, finish.
Go ahead, trustee.
Okay, I, I just, I mean, this plan, plan is great, because, you know, I want all the fire hydrants fixed. I'm just asking, you could push,
Go ahead, trustee.
Push the, uh, proposal back until we finish this plan, and then we can go on to start your plan. So, uh, I'm all for getting, I'm not gonna keep repeating this until everybody get it, because somebody else is gonna say, I'm all against, uh, you get fire hydrants fixed. But let's get this done, it's in place. We have the unions here, we got the public works here, uh, we ready to go, and we have already worked on the project. The, uh, fifty additional hydrants that you want fixed, well, the village wants fixed. And so, we can start as soon as they finish. That's all, that's, we could even have more accurate figures of, huh?
What did you say, trustee Bruce?
I said, we're, if they're talking.
There, trusty, trustee. Okay, go ahead, trustee, uh, Bruce.
Can you hear me now? Trustee Williams? Can you hear me? Okay. Now, what I was saying is that, uh, we have a plan in place. We have the union who's agreed to it, we also have Public Works who has agreed to it, and also Robinson Engineering. Uh, to go in and just waste eleven thousand dollars doesn't make a lot of sense. Uh, we have RFPs coming in next week, we should do those. I don't, your plan, I'm hoping to push it back a little bit, a week or two, so we can start as soon as we finish, as soon as we finish this plan, to go on to your, uh, the plan that you proposed. I'm for all, fix all of fire hydrants, but we have wasted, I mean, we have money in here that we have invested in getting these fire hydrants fixed, work is ready, is done, that's being worked on as planned. We can't just drop that and go on to, uh, another plan. I'm saying, finish what we have here, let's go on, and we can still get those fifty done by May twenty twenty-one. That's it in my mind. Did you hear me, trustee?
Okay, uh,
Okay.
I'm aware you did it, eleven thousand dollars wasted, but, uh,
I just said wasted, I said, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So what I'm trying to say is, okay, we still have a few more weeks. We go out, we can still continue what it is we're doing now in-house, for still such time, they get started, they make it less than sixty hydrants, however many we can get done in-house. But I'm gonna see why we should stop this going forward until that's finished. That may not get finished like you want it to, because guess what, we got Christmas coming. We got, uh, freeze frost coming. In the meantime, that, there could be some work, not necessarily repair work, but as I said before, you got evaluation processes going on. All that can be done. I'm not asking to stop what we're doing now, um, and then, um, waiting to, or waiting till they get through. I'm asking to move forward with this, because it has to go as the timeline stated, RFP first. Yes, we have RFP out there, y'all, we could, we could put RFP in extended for a little more, a little more time. It's not, it's just paperwork. These, you know, the vision that, well, whoever we get is gonna be working for us. And as far as the union's concerned, we can talk to them again. I mean, I don't see why it should be a big problem if we don't have the necessary personnel to complete it. It has, it should be done. I just hate to say, well, we're gonna start this part, and then I get, uh, someone to tell them, what about me? And what about, why are you doing this one here, and you're not doing where I'm at? And the answer to them would be, well, that's all we have to do right now, is that. Instead of, who worked on all of them at one time, and it'll get done before this process is over with, all of them will get done. All of the fire hydrants will be done. Instead of saying, right now, we're just working on, and who chose the ten or fifteen, or whatever it is we charged for three hours, decides, who made that choice? Those are the questions that people will ask. I mean, you may not hear it now, but those guests never ask those questions. So I'm just trying to put a plan, I put a plan together that would eliminate all that, that we can do it at one time, we don't have to go out for a bit. Because as I stated, no, you don't, I mean, I'm sorry, not there, I'm sorry, you had to go out for a while, I'm sorry, you're right.
That, that was just a suggestion.
Well, I'm just saying, we got, we got another plan in place, that we probably will go out, uh, provide for something entirely different. So that's something that's coming down, but yes, I talked to a lot of people, uh, professionals, and other municipalities and organizations, that, that, uh, gave me some of these, uh, estimated, uh, costs and time for it.
So can these, uh, professionals and engineers, uh,
Hold on just one second, uh, trustee, trustee, okay, go ahead, trustee Bruce.
I can't hear you.
There's a time debt for, for, uh, I'm done, about four times. I would like to give my last word to government committee, because we've put a lot of this committee at one time, but most importantly, I do agree that we have a plan in place that we're moving forward with, and we are going to get an actual amount of fire hydrants prepared in that plan. I, the son of a, he's a fox about, and when I see trustee Bruce, and the village minister, have a talk about fire hydrants, which probably going on for a month or so, and trustee Brian, he's been submitted a call in September, and then the village minister, and after all of this, and now, what my concern is, now you're coming up with a plan. Why didn't you play back then, before everybody wasted all that time putting their plans together, and you were working on something that just had to do? Because again, you're saying that this is gonna take place for the spring? I think it's been down the spring, and we're gonna see a substantial amount of fire hydrants. But this is my concern. I don't want to put it off another day, because the judge gets canned or gets dipped, and before we know it, something can stop us from moving. I want to continue with this program, that's what I'd like to do. And I'd like to discuss your program first, after the union had had a chance to review it. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, um, as you have stated, I did not say we would stop what we're doing. I would, I would say I'm trying to bring this now, if you want to talk about it. I would like to put it on the, uh, the agenda for the last month, I'm, I'm sorry, the last week of this month, so we can either get started or don't get started. Uh, as far as talking to the union, I mean, we can, we can always do that. I mean, I don't know why it would be a hard thing to talk to them, this shouldn't be that hard to talk to unions about something like this, so, that's not a problem. I think we do have, uh, but to just say no, I, I don't see a reason for that. I mean, just, it, it, the, the end, the end result is helping all, of doing all the fire hydrants. Not just a few now, and then sometime later that we don't have the money, or we don't have whatever, to, 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 to do that. So right now, I think we have the funds to, to, uh, to do this all at once. Contract whoever it is that gets the bid to do this, and put it in their hands, put it in their hands to, uh, to, uh, get it done. Uh, somebody else have something to say?
So, so it's my,
Hold on just a second, before you, is any, did you smoke twice, I was gonna make sure anybody else, any other trustee have anything else? Okay, go ahead, trustee.
So, it's my understanding that, um, uh, we gotta proceed with the, uh, RFPs that we,
Go ahead, you said what dollars? You can't hear her?
We gotta, you gotta,
Door didn't hear.
We, we gotta proceed with the, uh, plan we have in place. Uh, on the twenty-fourth of November, and here, uh, Robinson Engineering is gonna bring in the RFPs, and we're gonna work on that, and then we're gonna talk about your, your plan. Is that my understanding?
The understanding is, if you wanna talk about it next week, that's fine, but I wanna put it on the agenda for the fourth week of November to be voted on.
Okay, is it possible to have some of those engineers or those professionals come in and talk to us about?
We don't have, we don't have them coming ahead of time before you put our,
Oh, yeah, so, okay.
They don't have them to talk before they, 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 they submit their RFP, and then you go from there. You don't bring it to them, tell them what you want them to do before they have a chance to get on the project. There, there's all the food in the RFP package, what, what it entails.
Oh, so, I mean, you suggested Robinson Engineering not be good, yeah, okay.
I didn't suggest any engineering, no. I just said engineering, I didn't, there's nothing in here that states anybody's name. It says engineering firm. It says, it, it, Village Engineering Evaluation. That's the, that's our firm, that's the engineer firm after. After everything is, uh, just like we do now with bids, we get the bids, and the engineer looks out and see which one qualifies. That's what I'm trying to do. Okay. Any other questions? All right, um, we'll go into comments, uh, public comments. Okay, um, you have a comment?
Yes.
Is your mic on?
That couch, I find it real heartwarming that you're finally taking heed about these fire hydrants. I appreciate all of trustee's comments, I know for these has worked on this thing hours. I think that, that the time that it's coming forward from the mayor should have been done months or years ago. I don't know what took him so long, all like trustee Bell said, it's election time. But we get the picture, all of these things should be looked at. And I think the biggest thing that we need to look at right now is our Public Works Department, get answers from them. They were working their tails off this last weekend, and I don't know if you were out there, Mr. Mayor, but I know there were several people saw what was going on. Our, our Public Works knows what needs to be done, when it needs to be done, and how it needs to be done. You bring in some outside firm that has no idea, I find that a little concerning. I think we should talk to our people that have done this for years, and make, and make the determination of what they feel needs to be done and work with them. That would be a great thing, and I appreciate everybody getting started on this. But like you said, it should've been done years ago. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I was listening, and what I didn't understand was I heard from proposal. Yeah, it was from the mayor. I heard a lot of disagreements from the different trustees and the whatabouts and whatevs. Have we agreed on it going forward? Yes, we have, that's all I need to know. So we oughta go move forward on this, with the proposal that's in front of us. Now.
Okay, um, he's at the mic, I don't know what I can do, trustee Williams, uh. Yeah, they, they, I, I got it by the uh, speakers. But uh, he was asking, um, go ahead.
No.
Let's, I'm ahead there, he was asking, that he should.
You came with a proposal, I listened to it.
He said, I came with proposal, he was listening, listening to it.
And yet I didn't hear any other proposal, which would've been nice.
And then he said?
And yet you all proposed with a proposal that was put in place, past tense. And the work has already been initiated. And it's only, uh, what, one in seventeen fire hydrants. My own point already. Well, this year, I, I like the fact that we're looking at getting all of them once done in a certain amount of time. And calling that a day, moving on to the next, what are you all building? That's all I wanna hear. Are you all moving forward on this or not? You bring that in. See, because the proposal sounds good, I listened to it thoroughly. Yes, it is sliding, um, what you already have on, but what is it, eleven thousand already invested? But what's that compared to four, six hundred thousand? At a timeframe, it's done. Not knocking Robinson engineering or the public works.
One minute.
But I think you all need to come together and get something done. Thank you.
Anybody there?
Judy Castner. I have a lot of concerns about what I heard at this special meeting. And I feel that the fire hydrants have been on, um, regular meetings, uh, on and off for a lot of years. I think the fact that at the end of a four-year term, all of a sudden it pops up again, we are gonna do something about it, opens the door to why are we doing it that way? Is this a campaign issue? I have a lot of questions when it comes to how it's being done. The proper thing when you decided that this is what you wanted to do would've been to get the trustees together and say, this is what we've got, this is what we've got to work with. We need to start pulling it together and see what we can make of it. The fact that this is all kept a secret until tonight leads us right back to that door, the campaign issue. Why wait till the last minute? Why wait till the end of the campaign? We've got good people in place doing good work and you ignore them. You ignored all of them, for your inner circle, for your people, whoever they are that you conferred with to bring this all into a, a big ball. But the people that really matter weren't included. And I think that's a shame. And that's sad, and that's sick. And I think we need to, we've always, over the years, relied on Robinson engineering. Why would you want to let go of them now as far as this issue is concerned? They're handling it, let them handle it. Why would you want more money for somebody else? Our water department is working wonderfully and they have it over a lot, a lot of years. They bust their ass every time they go out for a main break and what have you. I've stood here and watched them.
One minute.
We need to keep them. They're a part of us. They shouldn't have to work, part them, part somebody else. Mr. Grant, the money that we have or that you feel is fair and whatever, you agreed that some of the figures were not correct. And in your next breath, you said, let's pay for it now. We have it, why not? Well, I disagree, and I think all of you trustees, the mayor has asked for this to be put on the agenda two weeks from now or at the last meeting of the month. You've got some time to investigate it, and you've got time to do something about it. And if it means voting no, go for it.
Okay, um. Seems like I thought I answered this already, sorry, it's right now. I answered that question, I don't know why you feel to think that it's a political. This is how we, this is what we have, we have the money right now to, to do, that's what we're talking about. So if you wanna take this political, I'm sorry that you feel that way, but I think we can get this done. Second part, the second part is, when I get rid of, I don't want somebody to put that up. There's nothing saying we get rid of our engineering firm that we have right now. So why does that even come up? That's a falsehood that I guess you wanna spread, but nothing in this pro, uh, in this proposal says that we're gonna go to a different engineering firm, nothing. So saying that we were getting rid of Robinson engineering and go get someone else to come and do it is a falsehood. I have never said anything like that. Are, are we gonna go forward? Well, we're putting it on the agenda to be voting on. So, once it's voted on, yeah, they will let you know if we're going forward. So that's the answer to that question. And uh, I understand you have, people have their own uh, evaluations and their own questions and comments about how things are done. That's, that's why everybody has a different, you know, um, perspective. But um, I gain the reason why that we're, we'd like to start this right now, why we'd like to go forward with this right now. I'm not disqualifying anything, I'm just saying that we need to do it this way, and I think it's a better way. But it'll be put on the agenda. If anyone has any other, um, updates or something else, I, I've heard everything that uh, trustee said. Uh, since I was put something else different in writing, that's not a problem. Uh, we have another week if you wanna, you know, but I'm still gonna ask and have to put on the agenda for the fourth week of, um, November to move forward. Uh, that being said, excuse me. Um, I don't think we need, okay, I won't say that. I'll ask, do we need comments and questions from the trustees? Or do you wanna wait till the last, to the next meeting and do that? You wanna talk?
Yeah, I, I just wanna comment and reiterate.
Wait, wait a minute, trustee, what'd you say, trustee Williams? Okay, go ahead.
I just, uh, wanna comment and reiterate that, um, we have the money, we have the manpower, we have a plan, that's going on our plan. Then add on what the mayor wants, cause the whole purpose is, the goal is to get all these fire hydrants fixed. We wanna make sure they get it fixed, but right now we have a plan, let's do this plan, cause we have the money. Mr. Fitch came in and told me we have the money, okay? We have the money, uh, to get these things fixed, let's do them, and that's on what your, with the, I, I'll call it the plan, uh, phase three, I guess. And let's get them all done before May. But, you know, since we got this started, we wanna lose any money. Let's do what we gotta do and call it, um, what we got going. That's the end of my comment.
Anybody else have a comment? Oh, trustee Grant.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. So, um, seems like if you don't submit a plan, it's a problem, and you do submit a plan, it's a problem. So I'm under that question that I'd love to see all fire hydrants fixed right now, uh, sooner rather than later. I understand we have a process right now where on Saturday, it's called works, it's working, and that's fine. And that should continue on, I don't see a problem with that. This plan and that plan can be simultaneous. Well, what I do think is that, and, and we should not be trying, well, I'm sorry, we should not. It's better if we can just go and fix all new now versus those seventeen or those twenty that we're gonna bid out. I'd rather bid out all sixty at one time, because I, I just can't, I have a hard time to hypothetically, the resident asks me, but what about my fire hydrants? Uh, I, I don't have an answer for that, I really don't. I can't say, well, we're gonna get to you in the spring, get to you in the summer, we don't know. But we do know if we go this way, and they're all done right now, we can say, they should be all done by April, should be all done by May, or whatever the case may be. Um, so, I understand we have money invested, again, that money's not gonna go to waste. It'll just add on to the work that's already been done. So therefore, I, I think that we should put on the agenda, we should vote on it, and we should vote, we should pass it, because I don't understand how we not want to see all the hydrants done sooner rather than later. Just because we have a current process in place that is peaceful. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Right, you, you wanna?
Say the passes, and you either can tell us or no, then what do you do? Right now, the union is on board with what we're doing. I mean, basically, we're sure you, you, you gotta work, you gotta work with the impact. And we go back to the same trust issue with, with our, with our employees. They're looking at this, they're, they got a little bit of extra money coming in on Saturday, and we're gonna pull it? You're gonna put them all out to do it all the time? Until it's, until it's passed, they're gonna keep working, so not let them finish, I feel like they're just a little bit.
Okay, you all talking between each other?
I'm just saying.
Okay, so that's, that's the comment.
Yeah, I'm back to you.
Okay. Okay, well, first of all, I'm not, first of all, and I, I'm gonna say this so you can understand.
I understand this, but the mayor is not willing to support.
We went to the union and asked them to do this to figure making them, we're going to afford. I don't know where, I get tired, I'm serious, I get tired of hearing that the union doesn't trust me or whatever.
They said it.
Okay, sir. I'm saying, I get tired of hearing the union says they don't trust me. And I just, are you gonna let me finish? Are you gonna let me finish? So I don't know where that comes from. During this whole pandemic, that started in February of last of this year. Tell me one time they lost a paycheck. Tell me one time I laid off. Tell me one time that they didn't have a reason to not trust me. I don't understand that, so why wouldn't it be any different? We will go back and negotiate with them once this, if it goes slow with them about that, that's what it's all about. But not to stop the progression of this village, because who worried about what the union is going to say, sir? That's not, that's not how I do business. There's always a way to talk. There's always a way to go back and say, okay, let's, let's, let's relook at this. But if you're telling me that we're, 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 put it, they're not trusting us because we're not giving them more money or they can work overtime? Now, I, I, I don't understand that one. But that being said, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn, which I'm gonna go back. No, I didn't, I made a statement. I didn't ask you anything.
Nobody's trying to.
I'm not making, I made a statement, sir, I didn't ask you a question. I was making a statement to what you said, and that's all I'm gonna do, I wasn't asking any questions, this is comments. Then you wonder why I get upset because, we're, we're supposed to be trying to conduct the union, not going back and forth with personal agendas. I would ask for a motion to adjourn, somebody?
Brewer, step down.
Uh, uh, Brew, trustee Brewer said, made an motion, and Williams, will you say it? Okay, uh, matter of course, please, hold on.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Will you?
Motion's carried, uh, we will come to open, uh, for the, uh, regular board meeting in exactly five minutes. We adjourn until five minutes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Matter of course, please, hold on.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Tzizet? Here. Trustee Todd? Here. Trustee Bell?
Here.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Here.
Okay. Out of the four approval of minutes, I will accept the motion to approve the general proceedings for the committee of the whole meeting for October twentieth, twenty twenty. Remove that trustee, tie a second that trustee Bell, any questions?
Um, I talked to the village, uh, firm.
I talked to the village firm about it, just to put it on record, I'm gonna bring it back. The amount on page two, I got a hun, a hundred forty-four thousand, it should be a hundred forty-two thousand five twenty-four. And I, I'll bring that to you, I just wanna make sure it's on record, uh, for that. That's, that's the only comment.
Okay.
And, and, and what?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, uh, generally what minutes are, is what actually occurred at the meeting. So at the meeting, the amounts that are there is what was stated. So, moving forward with these minutes, I can then say that you provided the correct number. Because at that meeting, I asked for someone to come back and give me the correct number, but it wasn't so that I could alter the minutes. Minutes are activities of what took place. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Anyone? Uh, both please, hold on.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee DeMason?
Standing.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams? Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion carried, uh, public comment. Our question and comments will be directed to the mayor. These speakers alone might not turn to speak for three minutes or may not be here to debate. How replies or rebuttals? Please come up and state your name, your comment.
Judy Gaster.
Please give a moment to go back to us quickly. Try to start your timer.
Okay. Judy Gaster. First of all, I'd like to clarify something from the previous meeting on my comment, and it was misconstrued as it usually is. When I referred to getting rid of Robinson Engineering, I wasn't talking about getting rid of them on a whole. I was talking about them not being used in a specific thing that was going to be done or wanting to be done. Therefore, uh, water department and Robinson Engineering, it was not meant that you're getting rid of them. And I'm sorry that you took it that way. Now, to get out of this meeting, I'm asking again, and I would like to know why I can't get any answers to why we can't get the, uh, uh, accounts payable that were belongs back on that table so that we can take it when we're here without making special trips to go back and get one the next day or whatever. Nobody seems to give me an honest answer for an answer that's acceptable, that the numbers might not be correct. When are the numbers correct? So ninety years tomorrow about incorrect numbers. They've been that way for the past fifty years that I've been here. Nobody seems to have a problem with it then, but there's a major problem with it now, and I wonder why. I would like to know why we can't have accounts payable like we used to, why the trustees aren't fighting for it, why they're not asking for it if you look back where it belongs, why only one trustee has, has actually said that it needs to be done their way, and you two are the only two that say that. And the people want to see the numbers. And if it happens to be a wrong number, it comes out that night. I'm sorry?
I said one minute.
When you go over accounts payable, if there are any mistakes, it's done that night. Residents are capable of putting a line through something and making it corrected. We don't have to wait for you to do it for us. We want the accounts payable back. We want our trustees to be used as trustees. We don't want them to find out what's going on on the night of a meeting. It shouldn't be, it never should be. No other mayor ever did that, and I've been through a lot.
I'm back. Very good. I'm a little bit disappointed. I'm hearing the same thing I heard over the last twenty, twenty-five years. A house divided cannot stand. Being an army is good itself, and it's not satisfied with the windows and doors. They fault the people for making a decision. I hope I make them feel good. I didn't like what I heard. In a sense, it was a good thing. I don't think everybody was on page with it. Get something done. Say something. I'll read about the next thing, but get something done now. Thank you.
Don, you're gonna box rocks.
All right, Don. I will apologize to the person I thought I heard get rid of the problem in Robinson Engineering. I didn't know that, I didn't know that you didn't mean that, but okay, now that you said that, that's fine, that's on record. Uh, as far as the accounts payable, we stated before the reason why they weren't back there because they were drafts. And, uh, but we'll have to go over that again in finance department because some things, as you stated before, you've been coming to meetings, are either taken out or the numbers are, um, changed. And I would have something out there that's correct and instead of someone bringing it back to me and saying, "Well, wait, you stay right here, this is why, why didn't you do that?" So that's something that we will, we will, uh, revisit, and hopefully we can, uh, have that taken care of by the next board. Okay, um, that being said, we'll move on to the mayor's report. Um, first of all, tomorrow, the village hall will be closed in honor of veterans, the veteran celebrations. Uh, we usually have a veteran celebration here, but due to COVID and the veterans are, you know, uh, elderly, or some of them are, I won't say they all are. Uh, we decided to have a walkthrough, which means the veterans will come in. We have packets for them, uh, we're going to, uh, the packets are already stuffed, and when they come in, all of them is asking what brand you serve, that they, uh, they serve, and they can pick up their packet. So that's how we're gonna be doing the celebration this year. We won't have a program, but, uh, and then the packets, there'll be some things in there for them to, uh, hopefully enjoy, and, um, we'll go from there. Also, um, you see a lot of things that are going on, uh, throughout the village. Uh, we're still on top of, we're seeing a lot of people asking to, um, to do some businesses in the village, do some business work in the village. And businesses opening or trying to open in the village, and I'll keep everyone updated uh, as we find out more about it right now. Uh, I don't put it out there until, because I don't wanna have it out there when you said they were gonna open, and they ain't gonna open, so... When they do open, or when I sign a business license, I will let the board know if that business actually is going to open or, or whatever. Um, the next thing is something that's real important, so it should be important to everybody, and that's the, uh, the numbers for the COVID. They have risen in every community. And right now, we're still in phase four with a mandatory shutdown of all, um, rest lines. As far as sitting inside, they still have carryouts, and they're allowed to have carryouts, but sitting inside, um, they're not allowed to do that, and they can also sit outside, but they can only sit outside if they're have a license to sit outside. So they just can't just come sit outside and serve food without having a license, there's a procedure to go through with that. But as this is coming on and as things get colder, it may go back to phase three. Phase three means everything is shut down. So I'm hoping that it does, I'm hoping everybody, but we can only do what we can ourselves, um, for our own family and continue to do that because it's not worth it. It is not worth it. Take their share, or take some one time. They're talking about coming out with a vaccine in April. Well, see, you gotta go two months, four months before that happens. Just be cautious. Be cognizant of what you're doing and where you're going. So, uh, just wanted to bring that out. Um, that's all that I have. Matter of fact?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple things. And believe it or not, one of the ones that I'm gonna talk about were the COVID cases because I generally keep up with it on a weekly basis, and it's very unfortunate that each week, our numbers increase by at least ten new cases. And so, as, uh, when I submitted on, uh, the emails this morning, we're up to two hundred and seventy-seven cases. And I don't think that our small village can afford ten cases every week. And at some point in time, I will be asking for consideration to use the declaration that is still in force where this pandemic is concerned, and that we go back to those, ooh, zone meetings. But I'm in the office now very rarely. I'm in the office when I absolutely have to be in the office. Other than that, I am working from home. And then to come out to our meetings here and then, believe it or not, I'm in the older generation at this point, so I'm one of those that they say, you know, I need to be really, really careful as well. And I am being very careful, but I promise you, what I went through in January, and I know it's personal, but those minutes you saw me stumbling and falling around this place, and you're trying to hold me up and walk me back to my office, I never wanna go through that again, people. And I'm not going to continue to put myself in jeopardy because I don't want you to put yourselves in jeopardy either. We must wear our masks, we don't always wear our black mask, can't say what you're doing when you go to the restrooms in terms of washing your hands, but we need to be very cautious, and we need to appeal to many and everyone that we know and that we love and that we dislike just a little bit, that they really must take this seriously. Ten per week, it's gonna catch all of us at some point in time. We don't have that many numbers, but let me move on. Um, we had, we had our three polling places with the seven precincts precincts out voting on the third. And to be perfectly honest, I went by the different polling places, and there was only really one issue at one place, and that was whether internet had gone down, and so that was a, a big poor moment. But then also, they didn't have the signage up. So I worked with them, we got the signage up, and everybody was able to, um, identify where they were supposed to go. The candidates form is still being planned on the twenty-first. Uh, we have ten people signed up and registered. I shut down registration this morning at two o'clock AM, and then, believe you not, someone called me at nine forty and talked about it's closed, and it's like, uh-huh, it's closed. Um, but we'll be here providing the numbers don't continue to increase. So those who have registered already, I will work with getting them the meeting materials if we have to go to a zone meeting, okay? But I'm not going to put candidates in danger either, but, you know, it's gonna be case by case. We're gonna introduce kidney evaluation screening, which is going to take place on the nineteenth, if I'm not mistaken. And that's gonna be from three to seven here in the senior center. And, um, I really would like to see, and I'm certain trustee, uh, Regal's would agree, we would like to see a sizable number of people out here. We did invite our surrounding, um, neighbors as well. I received notice from the union today. They are readying our documents for the mail, and so at any point in time, we should see the update for supplemental two on the website, but it has been mailed. We had a board order for the first time since two thousand seventeen that I knew about that I could post on the Facebook emails page. And even though, I'm sorry that we had a board order, I'm just so thankful that we got the information and that we were able to pass it on, even though some of our people weren't totally pleased with it, but that's neither here nor there. Thank you, Mr. Hurkies, for sending that information to me, and a number of people actually really appreciated receiving it. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. Uh, village engineer, Mr. Jim Zarley.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the past months, I met several times with the mayor and village staff to discuss a potential roadway improvement program. This roadway improvement program would resurface a significant portion of village streets. The project would be funded by bond issued to be repaid by additional revenue sources recently bundled to the village. I plan to present the full roadway improvement program as board at the November seventeenth committee of the whole meeting. At this meeting, I provide details of how the program is developed and details regarding funding sources. Also, the fire hydrant replaced the project in opening will occur at the same committee meeting on November seventeenth. That concludes my report, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, village administrator, Mr. Jerry Hurkies.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, again, I'll jump on some of the things that Kevin's gonna talk about and Jim has talked about already, but, uh, the hydrant work update that told you that we would have every week. Uh, we repaired the hydrant in, uh, two hundred and twenty-second place and third. And that hydrant that we replaced, we also replaced the main shut-off, which will allow us then to go into three hundred hydrants and change them pretty easily. That was the four we're talking about, trying to get our biggest bang for the buck. Um, next week, we plan on doing one of those hydrants, but as you're gonna hear from Kevin in a little bit, we're gonna start draining the water tower. So we don't wanna put our fire department at risk, we're gonna go to a different location to do the hydrant, to continue on with the hydrant program. And that's gonna be at two nine four six, two hundred and twenty-fifth place. Everything works out, that's what our game plan is for this week, to work on that hydrant. Two nine four six, two hundred and twenty-fifth place. A tree proposal, I have put it on mailboxes tonight. We have four quotes for the removal of trees that we had talked about, that the village doing have and the private company doing have. Four different quotes we can take a look at. We can discuss that at the next committee meeting, and go over those proposals, and then maybe we can come back and start planning for that also to start working on tree removals. Uh, property should be equipped, we had discussed that last week. Our public works went out to the north side of Chicago and picked up some free equipment that we got donated, and in the spring, we'll be putting that equipment up in Carroll Park for the mayor. Thank you, thank you, Public Works. Uh, realtors issue, I met with Tom Joseph, I talked to the mayor numerous times about it. I talked to our, our attorney, I talked to our, our different departments and our, um, committees. We're waiting for the orders to be drafted, and we'll have that in front of your committee as soon as the orders are drafted from our, our attorneys and the realtors agree with it. At this point, we're looking at zero dollars to the realtors, which is what we had, a hundred thousand dollars set aside. Um, so it's a very good, very good point where we're at at this point. Uh, minority trucking, we had talked at a committee meeting a couple months ago about minority trucking and how they wanted to, uh, continue their six B for another ten years. We had agreed it out of the committee, uh, has never come to the board. I wanted to see if we can discuss that again at committee and get it to the next board meeting if possible, so if we could ask, we can get this discussed, just to make sure we're all familiar with what he's looking for. Uh, it's minority trucking in the, in the tip area. He's looking for a continuation of another ten years for a six B. We've talked about bond work, Jim has talked about that, uh, I wish that... Uh, I reached Dr. Mary Thompson from our, our bond company. So her and I are meeting this week to go over that and some of the tip proposal work we discussed in the center of town, redoing that tip. So I asked her a couple months ago to get some numbers for us so we could bring that tip back to get some development in that center of town. We've all known, um, we've had some calls about our buddy Sasha at Marco Trucking. And he has continued, he's got all his permits, he's all set, he got the state of the road license permit. He's doing very well. He has a lot on his parking lot. He has not done the ashlog yet. Uh, he's looking for some incentives. Mayor, I think he'd like to sit down with you and I and talk about some incentives. I have reached out to J. Kine from Chicago Heights, who does the, um, enterprise zone. See if we can get some money out of the enterprise zone. Uh, and also maybe looking at an AP for Marco Trucking, if it's available, if this board approves. And then finally, we've got home fires. We've talked about it with fire department and public works. We've had some homes that are ravaged from fires and they sit there for way too long. So last time that we were at the board meeting, I talked about us being in front of the judge. The judge has granted us a demo orders on those two properties. I'll get their addresses for you. We are going out to bid for demo companies to bid on those demolitions, whatever's left of those homes. So our game plan is to use the rest of the money we get on the other brands, or I'm sorry, the IHE, I D H A brand, to get some homes knocked out, so it doesn't cause the village any inspiration of the rent. Uh, and so we hit those, the ISO the funds. Um, we have, you know, we heard from the other departments, but we had some people that were out there setting suppliers. Uh, we think we caught them and we're moving forward on that, but we still have some remnants of their handiwork. Those have to result. That is my report, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, uh, Finance and Administration, Director Michelle Royce.
Good evening. The Finance Department is requesting approval and disbursements totaling two hundred and sixty-five thousand, sixty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Consisting of payroll and benefits in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seven cents for the paid date of eleven, sixth, twenty twenty. The accounts payable registered dated eleven, tenth, twenty twenty in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. The Finance Department has held a status conference with Villa Cooper, our independent auditors, on the November fifth, on November fifth. Um, we have scheduled, uh, tentatively for them to be onsite the first week of December. In addition to that, uh, we sat down with Asavar, the, uh, auditors for our utility tax revenues and fees. They were in the office on Friday. And they will be forward with the review of our utility revenues and fees. So hopefully, they will be able to save us some money. In addition to that, I'd like to mention that the COVID grant, we're in the process of submitting our, um, our, um, documents to, um, to, um, request funding, the, uh, disbursement of funding dollars to the county. And they have, um, called us last week and said that the amount that they had originally had granting us will be increased by twelve thousand dollars.
And that is how much?
Uh, that'll put us closer to, um, I'm not sure the number. I think it was five, six or something at first.
Five hundred and thirty-six dollars.
And whatever it was before, they had another twelve thousand.
Well, that's like five hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Plus twelve.
Plus twelve, okay. Just want to make sure that's, that you have, you got that in.
Yeah, don't quote me on the five or the six, it's around that number.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
At least it's over five hundred dollars.
Yes, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Police Department, the chief stands, we have Sergeant Lang.
Good evening. When I started lying, as you know, chief did not make it, so he asked me to read this report for you. For calls for service for the period of ten, twenty eighth, two thousand twenty to November tenth, two thousand twenty, the police department responded to more than three hundred and seventy-one calls for service. During that same time period, officers made ten arrests. As far as the arson investigations, I can't speak about all of them. But on November second, the police department arrested Phil Estavas and he was charged with aggravated arson, which is a class X felony. And he allegedly started on the two, twenty-three hundred block of Merrill. Uh, as far as I know, to this point, since he's been incarcerated, there's been zero arsons. And that's.
Good to hear, good to hear, very good. My, 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 my. Thank you, good job. Um, Public Works, Director, I kept well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff, uh, cut the last four locations to forty-nine total locations. This will be the last cut for the year instead of the village halls and the leave pickup. Um, staff started prepping trucks to leave prep for the winter program. Pile salts, load check, safety lights, and general checks. Um, salt can be ordered as needed. We do have salt supplies, plus we have our normal allotment of them for the year. Um, leaf, leaf pickup begins November sixteenth. All piles have to be, that occur by November twenty-second to be picked up. All piles left out after the pass must be removed by the homeowner. A reminder, there is no parking on Merrill today. Uh, customer service, all water complaints and appointments are being addressed, uh, at this point. Staff completed October meeting readings and is currently waiting for a new shut-off list, should be starting on Thursday. Um, staff also set up for three events and posted three marquees and is working on, um, lighting and plumbing projects with the village hall, at the village hall currently. Um, currently, the village staff also had complaints for some streetlight issues. Uh, they've repaired some lights, um, started to reap some of the others this year. Two-eighteen place in Gay Lane, the bad head replaced okay. Public Works yard, bad head and photocell, it's repaired. Twenty-eight fifty-four to twenty-four street, wire broke and fuse link repaired, leg's working. Twenty-eight fifty-five to twenty-third place, fault located, repaired, twenty-five feet of wire up to the fuse link into the light head, that light is working. Two-two-six and zero-six Nichols, replaced photocell. Twenty-eight thirty-seven to twenty-fifth place, replaced photocell. And Apache and two-hundred and twenty-second, wire broke, repaired wire and replaced photocell, new leg is working. Um, some of the water operations that have been going on recently, we have a valve insert that was completed at two-eleven oh seven Olivia. This will assist us in removal and replacement of hydrants and valves in the future, for future repairs. Uh, staff will be installing a new valve at nineteen thirty, two-hundred and twenty-first feet for the COVID replacement job, um, to start on Thursday. Staff replaced broken hydrant and valve box, the main valve box at seventeen thirty-one to twenty-second place, which will make, if this valve replaced in at this location, will make it easier to replace the other three hydrants that we discussed earlier. Um, due to the wall number two being down for repairs at this, and the west tower being drained for, uh, painting at this project, it has to be empty and ordered to be painted. Uh, we are gonna lead to a different side of town because of the south side of town. Uh, once we, we open up any hydrant, we should be causing any kind of dings in the area. We tend to have, um, air lines, house back, increasing waterway breaks. And because we're gonna have the west tower offline, we will not have a backup supply. So we do not want to cause any waterway breaks in the area until the project is completed. So we'll be moving, uh, from, we'll be moving from one section of town to the east section of town to start our, our next repair. Hit that is twenty-nine, forty-six to twenty-fifth place. Um, I mean, I said, staff has removed, uh, more large street at two-fifteen, thirty-nine, eighty-eight and trimmed hazards from two other trees located at twenty-five eighteen Home Court and two-two-five, four-two, Thier. Due to the wind today, if there's anybody who has any resident, uh, who's calling in and wanting to pull drop the trees, please notify the village hall and we will address that as we can get to them. Um, staff started also powder patching in Coral Isle. Uh, more of the certain road projects that both will be part of the bihemoly can be get. Uh, but right now, we're doing, uh, powder patching in a few of the calls on the north side. We will continue throughout the north side until completed. Uh, staff has also posted, posted on the snow parking signs, a reminder, no parking after two inches of snowfall until completely renewed. And the road is closed, uh, due to the COVID replacements between Chappelle and Clive till completed, a place in fire has been notified. They're talking at least, uh, I would say about three or four weeks for that closure possibly. And hopefully, they leave the asphalt in this year. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, reports of trustees and standing committees. Public Safety Committee, trustee Daniel Goff.
We'll be, we'll be scheduling our meeting for, uh, the last week of November. Well, yeah, probably on Monday. And then, um, just remember, mask up, stay safe, check in.
Uh, Public Service Committee, trustee Breve Newell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple of things I would like to find out, uh, first. Uh, since we had, uh, it was sort of chaotic when we first started with the COVID, uh, because really, we didn't know what to do. I was wondering if there are any additional plans or anything that we need to do, uh, that could help out, you know, make the transition if we have to go to Zoom or, you know, not coming to office. Is there anything in the works that we should be working on, uh, right about now? And also, I was thinking that, uh, you know, when we do our water bill, that we might encourage, uh, residents to send their mail, uh, send the payments in instead of, you know, coming to the front desk. That's a suggestion, we could put that on the water bill. You know, so less interaction that they have to do with other people, you know, would be best. So, uh, those are my two questions I want to ask. My, uh, uh, Public Service report is about the, um, fire hydrants, okay? I want to reiterate that we have a plan. We have Public Works on board. We have the union on board. And everything is done, we can do, uh, take care of what's already planned, finished that plan, and go on to the mayor's plan. There's no reason why we can't get all this stuff done, you know? That's my, uh, desire and my thoughts and I, I think that most of the residents go along with it. So we really need to get this done and stop excuse express messing around with it. So that's the end of my report. But I would love for you to answer, uh, are we gonna do anything different? We might wanna, uh, do some sanitizing or anything. I don't know if that's the thing about saying, what are we doing to prepare? Because I really think this is gonna get worse before it gets better.
Um, you could make a point that I'm here every day. But to answer that right now, there are some things that we're looking at, but I don't have all the answers right, right in front of me. So I'm here every day if you want to come to the office. Uh, I can kind of let you know what, what's going on. And you're absolutely right, there may be some other bout of sanitization that we did when we first started the pandemic. So maybe another one, uh, we'll have to, in order to do that, we have to shut down, so. That's something that was talked about and, uh, you know, like I said, we said I can give you more of a, um, school. But right now, I don't have anything in front of me, but there are some things that. Director, who's the report?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I thought I said.
Okay. But the Finance Committee, trustee Roger, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do want to say that, uh, talks are still ongoing about the board's audit and for the annual audit of you. Uh, hoping that the next committee, I'm sorry, the, the meeting, the committee meeting following next month, next Tuesday, we can have the public's actuals report, everything kind of reviewed. At that point, I think we'll be, have to be able to see six months, uh, through the year, such that we feel a pretty good gauge. It's good to hear from, uh, the director there that we'll get extra, hopefully, if all goes well, extra ten, twelve thousand, that helps out, always needed, uh, if it ever be used. Uh, can I, you have a question for Mr. Hurkies? Mr. Hurkies, is that the map that I requested, uh, from you?
That's the map that I requested, that you requested from me, that, that, that. Please, you were talking about, yes, sir.
Uh, looks a little different, but, uh, so is the red, the ones that are not working, the white green is?
So the game plan was the blue and the dark green is the hydrants that Public Works has fixed in the last couple of years. The light green are the hydrants that we're looking to send out for a RFP. The red ones are the ones that Public Works is going to fix. So, light green are bad, red are bad. Dark green are the ones that are fixed. Light green was for the private company, red was for Public Works. That's how we end the line.
Thank you, appreciate that. And you will be updating that, uh, weekly or something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Already updated, we gained one to red again.
All right, that's all that happened here, thank you.
How's the Interdepartmental Relations, our trustee, Sharon Miff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just to kind of piggyback off of what, um, the village administrator said. On, um, October seventeenth, the village board received a memo from our attorneys in regards to capital and dynamic rentals. Uh, they're the people that are suing the village for the inspections. Um, there was a list of nine items that they wanted addressed. And once that's completed, they are willing to, um, drop the lawsuit. Um, the litigation, I should say. Um, he, once he gets the, um, ordinance with the changes in it, I think that we should meet and talk about that at a committee meeting. I don't really see, um, having a housing meeting for that. I think it's an amendment to an ordinance. And I think we need to sit down as a board and discuss the changes that they're looking for. And that concludes what I have. But the memo was sent out on the seventeenth of October, um, looking at the changes that they want. And then we can discuss it once we get there, okay? That concludes what I have to say.
Thank you. Orders and review committee, our trustee, Lieutenant Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last week or a couple of weeks ago, I brought before the board an ordinance that had to do with, uh, involved, um, mobile dispensaries, things like that. And I asked the board at that time, if you have anything you want to see in there, if you've got a chance to review it, please submit it to me because I'm going to schedule a ordinance review meeting. I just don't know the date yet. I'll probably let you know next Tuesday. So if you have any changes, anything you want to see in it, please let me know. And that was my report.
Thank you. Uh, Public Events, uh, trustee, um, David Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I do feel, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I do feel the residents say I have not been able to hear meetings in terms of prior meetings. And we'll be looking at the tape tomorrow and see if I can. Here's a, uh, meeting, if not, I'll be asking the clerk for a copy of the tape. So they do not hear meetings during the course of meetings, but they're on the phone, so you know. My report for tonight is tomorrow, we have free COVID testing and free flu shots from ten AM to two PM at the municipal center. We will be behind the police station. This is a drive-up event. Pre-registration and drive-ups, both are welcome if you do not have pre-registered. Social distancing will be adhered to. Masks must be worn. This is sponsored by the Family Christian Health Center and Local Health Pharmacy. If anybody has any questions, I will be on fighting cloud after eight-thirty. iPhone number is seven oh eight, three five one, eight nine two two. There will also be a food distribution while supplies left. All board members, staff, and residents who would like to volunteer are encouraged to come about. On November thirteenth is the annual Veterans Early Thanksgiving Dinner. This is normally done in the senior center, but due to the pandemic, this will be a special drive-through dinner at the Ambino, the Stager, for the first one hundred veterans that register. This event is in partnership with Southland Point, Illinois Partners in Hope, Ambino Restaurant, and of course, the South Village Hall of Veterans Committee. Free food options will also be distributed at that event for the veterans to show our appreciation for their service. If you'd like to register, you can email veterans.dinner@yahoo.com for registration. Please register by November tenth or as good as possible, obviously. Uh, November nineteenth, the village clerk and I are working on a free kidney and diabetes screening from three PM to seven PM. Pre-registration is advised. Please call three one two, three two one, one five zero zero, or visit the website, H T T S colon. or visit the website, H T T S colon backslash backslash W W W dot N K F I dot org backslash X screen. Must be 18 years or older. For the COVID testing, children can't be tested as long as a parent or a guardian is there waked up to flowers. I just wanna say that I'm getting a lot of calls for the free COVID testing. COVID really is on the back, on the rise. Please, everyone, be safe, be armed. Masks are required at all of our links. If you don't have one, I will supply one. For everyone that is coming to this testing, please be safe and use wisdom. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that Mr. Paul? Oh, that's fine, you have the report? Do you have a report, I see you just walked in.
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. You just got to, you just now, okay. Uh, new business, I'll accept the motion to approve the payroll and accounts payable for the amount of $265,064.14. To move our trustee. Trustee, move our trustee Bell, sign or trustee Jezesski have any questions? Now, the board, please tell the board.
Trustee Jezesski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Trustee Williams?
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Dual comments from the, uh, from the, from the man and board of trustees. Um, trustee Williams, we're gonna start with you because it's taking care of everybody here. Do you have any comments?
No, none of the type, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Jezesski?
No comment.
Trustee Yon Brewer?
No.
Trustee Todd?
No comment.
Trustee Grant?
No comment.
Trustee Bell?
We're here, ask, please say.
Okay, and, um, I have a comment to attempt to say tomorrow is at 11:00. If you know, uh, any, um, veterans, 11 o'clock tomorrow morning is when we're gonna have to pass out anything to be in the village hall, hallway. So it'll be Miller's Hall hallway, then you come right in, get that package and leave back out. That, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Move our trustee Bell. That's okay, move trustee, move our trustee Bell, we know second, our trustee Williams. Now, the board, please go. Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
I was, I was understanding that that was put on the back table.
Good evening.
I said I was under the understanding that that was put on the back table.